Go, Dave.
Meeting called to order today is Tuesday, December 17th. It is now 7:58 PM. Town council meeting in the town council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island.
Councilman Lichardi?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Yeah.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum. Discussion, action, vote of town council. Any matter on this portion of the agenda may be acted upon by way of topic discussion and action by the town council with a vote on the record to approve, amend, deny, or table the agenda item. Town council proclamation, celebrating 18 years Tree City USA community.
Jack in group, if you want to come on up. Just want to state your name for the record.
It's Robert Allard.
Robert Allard?
Ron Holloway.
Ron Holloway and Jack Lancelotta. Resolved that the town council of the town of West Warwick proudly joins with the West Warwick J.C.'s of Kent County in celebrating their 18th annual Tree City USA, which augments its townwide commitment to Earth Day, Arbor Day, Ecology Day, and our neighborhood partnerships through the national recertification as a Tree City USA community. And further, hearty congratulations to extended, are extended to our J.C.'s for their outstanding and continuous project management of public service at their award-winning J.C. corridor and arboretum. And that their advocacy for the rehabilitation of Senator Rock Riverwalk, all of which have become a statewide attraction for a horticulture excellence over the past decade. In dedication to these many endeavors, the West Warwick Town Council is honored to extend their appreciation, gratitude, and congratulations to the West Warwick J.C.'s for their commitment and dedication to the town of West Warwick. So, thank you. You want to hold up the flag and take your picture? Come on, Jack, get in there. Stop being shy all of a sudden. Thank you once again for all that you do.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Ordinance 2019-15, second reading, and ordinance amending the zoning map of the Code of Ordinances of the town of West Warwick. A petition was filed by La Croix Properties with the Town Council of the town of West Warwick requesting an amendment to the zoning map of the West Warwick Assessor's plat 36, lot 5, 59, and 220, changing from B to R 7.5, and permit the use of the designated property for development of up to 66 residential multifamily condominiums and 33 buildings.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Move in second, discussion? Any public discussion?
May I just ask a question about plat and lot numbers? There seems to be a discrepancy. Which one is correct?
Five is correct.
Okay.
Thirty-five is a typo that exists on the agenda and also the resolution.
Okay.
So, this one is correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Yep.
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Town council resolution previously tabled approving the amendment of the zoning district designation for AP 36, lot 35, fifty... That's lot five, right?
It should be lot five, yes.
Lot 5, 59, and 220, changing the zone from B to R 7.5, and permitting the use of the property for development of up to 66 residential multifamily condominium, 33 buildings.
Move the resolution?
Mr. President, if I may?
We need a second.
Second.
Well, he needs to take it off the table.
I'll make a motion to take the resolution off the table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, I need a motion.
Now, I'm going to make a motion to move the resolution.
Second.
If I may, you need to move to amend the agenda regarding the typo.
Right.
And you also need to actually amend the resolution. With the subject matter, there's a typo. However, down in its body, it has the right lot. So, I would suggest filing, making a motion to amend the agenda to correct the lot 35, it should be lot five. It's a typo, nothing more, nothing less.
I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda with the items just stated by the solicitor.
Second.
Move in second, discussion? Any public discussion?
I have, I just want to say for the record, not against the 66 condos, I just think that's going to be a ton of traffic.
This has got nothing to do with the merits, this is just, this is just for the agenda.
What did you say?
This is just for the agenda.
Yeah, we're just correcting the agenda.
The agenda's got an incorrect number for its plat, excuse me, lot.
Yep. So, all in favor with the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, now we're going to talk about...
And again, as relates to the proposed resolution in the subject portion of the resolution, it has the same typo. That needs to be fixed before you can entertain whether or not you're going to vote, and then Councilman Lichardi can put his remarks on the record.
Okay, thank you.
Just for three or four?
This would be for the subject matter for the resolution, it should be lot five instead of the...
No, no, I'm saying, is it item number three or four? Three. Could you just state for the record the amendment again?
Again, you should amend the resolution in the subject matter portion. It should be lot five, not lot 35.
I'm going to make a motion to amend the aforementioned information from the solicitor.
Second.
All in favor for that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Now, both amendments have been passed, I need somebody to move the resolution. I'm going to move the resolution again.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Move in second, discussion?
All I want to say for the record, I'm not against the condos, I just think 66 units, 132 cars of people living there, plus deliveries coming in, it's just going to pour a lot of traffic onto Providence Street, and I think we need to be ready for it, that's all.
Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Ordinance 2019-16, second reading sponsored by Council President Goslin, and ordinance section 34, public hearing of the zoning board of review of the town of West Warwick, code of the Code of Ordinances of the town of West Warwick. Notification including the date, time, place, and purpose of the hearing, and street address of the subject property shall be sent at least 14 days prior to date of hearing by first-class mail to the applicant and also residential mail. Return receipt requested to all butters up to 200 feet shown on the current real estate assessment records of the town.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Move in seconded, discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes. I do have to go back to number two.
Right.
I have to go back to number two and take a roll call vote.
Okay.
On the ordinance.
So, if we can move back to two, please, because it was an ordinance, not a...
Not a resolution.
Resolution. You want to read number two all over again?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't read it. Or, sorry, sorry. Ordinance 2019-15, second reading, and ordinance amending the zoning map of the Code of Ordinances of the town of West Warwick. A petition was filed by La Croix Properties with the Town Council of the town of West Warwick requesting an amendment to the zoning map of the West Warwick Assessor's plat 36, lot 5, 59, and 220, changing from B to R 7.5, and permit the use of the designated property for development of up to 66 residential multifamily condominiums and 33 buildings.
I'll move the ordinance once again.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion from the council? Any public discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Jay?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Minutes of the previous meeting, we're having, go ahead, minutes of the previous meeting, approval of the minutes of the December 3rd town council meeting?
Move the minutes? Just take a, give me a second.
Second.
And then I can talk about it.
They're not there, I never got to see them.
So, there's a problem with the actual, was it Granicus that had the problem, or was it?
Well, what happened is we got upgraded to Windows 10, and now it won't allow us to get into Granicus to the minutes portion of it, so while I had them done, when I went to go to print them, it wouldn't open anymore.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to move the...
Table.
To table, I'm sorry, to table it till the next meeting, sorry.
I'll second that.
Move in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Consent agendas, license applications, resolved with the consent agenda having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same as hereby approved.
I recuse myself, sir. He's recusing. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to move license applications.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. For the record, Councilman Messier have accused himself from this matter.
Approved? All licenses are approved?
Yep.
Okay. Town council acting as a liquor commission. New Class B Limited Victualing Liquor License, New England Authentic Eats LLC, doing business as Papagino, 700 East Greenwich Avenue.
I will move the license. Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So...
John, this is your one.
Yeah, so, you know, this is the person I'm actually seeing of it on the agenda, when I saw the agenda, is this, um...
I think he's here.
Is this beer?
Come on up to him.
What are we talking about?
Just state your name for the record and what you're looking to do.
When I was a kid, I used to have a beer in there.
Yeah, we did, a long time ago. Land Dairy, general manager of Papaginos in West Warwick. We're looking to get just beer and wine in bottles, no hot alcohol, no kegs, just bottles.
Any discussion? Any questions? Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Town council acting as town council, resolution authorizing the purchase of a 2017 Ford F-150 pickup truck from Sandy Motors, Inc., 118 Sandy Bottom Road, Coventry, Rhode Island, for the West Warwick Fire Department for an amount not to exceed $18,000. Funding for this purchase will come from the insurance disbursement of $6,950 from the accident, $4,500 from the department's smoke detector fee account, $4,500 from the department's apparatus replacement fund, and $2,050 from the department's fleet maintenance account, sponsored by President Goslin.
I'm going to move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, chief?
Yes, thank you very much, and the department's been without a pickup truck, as you might imagine, you know, we have a lot of uses of, you know, for a pickup truck. We did need to get a vehicle, so by getting, you know, kind of putting two things together, we'll be able to use it to go do the smoke detector inspections, his fire alarm inspections that he normally does. In addition, he'd be able to pull some of our trailers and just generally move equipment around.
Is this four by four?
It is a four by four, yes.
I'm just, I'm just, 2017's pretty young. Have we done research on this truck at Sandy Motors?
Yes, we did, and we had Terry Canoya and John Patel both go look at it, take it out, and...
Do you like a COFAX or anything like that? Do we do, did we do any of that?
I did not do that, so I can't speak to that.
I'm just kind of, just kind of concerned, 2017, a used dealership, it's kind of questionable. You might just want to do that. It's 50 bucks, whatever it is, but...
Yep.
Is there warranty on it, chief?
No, it's passed its warranty. There is 114,000 miles on it, that's why it's a lower price. So, yeah, it's got, that's how it was driven a lot of miles. Terry, our experienced mechanic, would rather have a newer vehicle with higher miles than an older vehicle with less miles.
I, I can understand that aspect of it, but I'm just...
Do you know what it was used for prior?
I do not.
Just curious.
That's 117,000 plow miles, that's a lot of mileage.
It's not a plow, yeah.
Well, all kidding aside, I've seen dealerships take the plow package off and said there's never a plow on it, so I would, I would do definitely a COFAX and check what's going on, 100, that's a lot of miles on 17.
All right, could you approve it, subject to that?
I'll approve it, subject to that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment from the council? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Resolution authorizing the purpose of purchase of two Lucas III external chest compression systems for the West Warwick Fire Department for an amount not to exceed $35,000. The funding for this purchase will be from the Fire Capital Improvement Fund to Stryker Medical P.O., box 93308, Chicago, Illinois, sponsored by Town Council President Goslin.
I'm going to move the resolution.
Second.
Move in second, discussion? Chief?
Okay, thank you. So, this is something that we use, that we identified that we would be very beneficial. When we're doing CPR on scene now, we have to stay on scene for 30 minutes. This came down through Rhode Island Department of Health, and we've seen remarkable improvement in doing CPR for 30 minutes on scene and getting a pulse back on victims. So, when you're there for that long a time, having an external chest compression machine is of benefit. That's why, you know, we identified that as an essential need, and we put it in our capital budget last fiscal year.
Any questions for the chief? Anybody who's done chest compressions or been through that training knows a minute of that is very excruciating, so... Hearing none, all in favor?
We have the money for this, right?
Yes. Coming out of that fund, Stryker Medical.
Okay.
Yep, Capital Improvement Fund.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you, chief.
Resolution authorizing the police mobile data terminals, Windows 10 upgrade for an amount not to exceed $5,625. The funding for the upgrade will be from the West Warwick Municipal Court Fund, police mobile data terminals, Windows 10 upgrade by DMY LLC of Coventry, sponsored by Council President Goslin.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Chief?
Good evening, our, as we anticipate the extinction of Windows 7 support in January, we're moving ahead rapidly with the replacement and upgrades of all our computer systems. This particular project is for the mobile data terminals that are in our 13 frontline police cars, upgrading them to Windows 10, and during that service time, also upgrading their clients and putting in the newest version of our RMS police reporting system all at once to get the best bang for our expense. And as mentioned, I'm looking to use municipal court funds to pay for that upgrade.
Any questions for the chief? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Discussion, action. Governor's Commission on Disabilities Letter Regarding the Factory Street Playground. Town council to discuss the December 4, 2019, letter from Governor's Commission on Disabilities to the town of West Warwick regarding findings on noncompliance issues related to the Factory Street Playground and the jointly developed solutions and plan of action moving forward, sponsored by Councilman Messier.
Jay?
All right, so a lot of you probably saw the news piece on this, and I'm going to have Mark step up here, but I'm going to list a few things as well. Everybody knew I had some concerns initially about the wood chips and whether they were ADA compliant, and those are not an issue, they are compliant. So, I'm going to list a few things here that they've recommended we do. There's some things we're going to do to go above and beyond that, so we will be installing, so for those that aren't familiar, it's the playground right atop of Factory Street, right in the Civic Center parking lot. So, we will be installing signage at the gate indicating that the gate opens out. This was not a requirement, but it's a common sense measure by the town, we agreed to install. Frequent raking of the wood chips to level out the gullies and mountains. And again, I said, the wood chips are compliant, and that's an easy fix to go out there and have somebody go out there, whether, you know, maybe it's once a month, every couple of weeks, you know, especially during the summertime when they're out there more, do it more, do it more frequently. Installing a speed bump in the parking lot close to the entrance to the playground. Again, this is not a requirement, this is something that was suggested and we're going to, we're going to go above and beyond to do this. This next one is a requirement, it's raising the gate and widening and leveling the path within five feet of the gate. The level path shall have a firm surface that extends 18 inches beyond the gate, the entrance post on the latch side of the gate. And then there's a few things that we're going to do as weather permits. Create a lawn adjacent to the entrance gate, at least two disability parking spaces, preferable handicap van accessible spots, and a permanent and firm level path to the gate. The location of the handicap spaces needs to be in proximity with the facility. The town has agreed to design the spaces in the lawn area, but this takes a little bit of time to, to design that. And then also, one other thing, and this is again, this is not something that was mandated by them, but we are going to create a rubberized path that weaves through the playground with a gentle ADA compliant slope to the equipment. And especially, there's the merry-go-round there, if anybody that saw the news piece, that's one where the wood chips can often come up, so we're going to, I believe, the plan is, Mark, to put a rubberized path around that merry-go-round. And then, Mark, if you want to add anything, or if there's anything that you think I left out?
You've pretty much covered it all, but I just, I just wanted to add that, you know, town staff met with the Governor's Commission on Disabilities and had a discussion. We went over item by item in the letter that they had submitted to the town. And a couple of things I just, I just wanted to address very quickly, and that is that the, the handicap playground, as it's referred to, you know, was the product of a grant that was received from the state. So, the town put together some bid specifications for contract to come in, bid on ADA compliant equipment, and one of the requirements is that a certain percentage of the equipment be ADA compliant, but not all of the equipment. That is in compliance with the ADA standard. And then it was the responsibility of the contractor to make sure that all of the equipment was installed properly. What was not part of the bid specifications nor the grant was providing ADA accessible parking spaces, although we were aware that they needed to be installed, as well as the ramp accessing the playground, simply to install the, provide the equipment, install the playground. There was an issue with the grading within the playground, it was off by less than 1% if you look at the letter and, and the, and the inspection that the state performed. And one of, two of the suggestions were, well, you could go in and regrade the playground or you could provide this path. And the simplest solution was to provide the path, as well as making it easier for anyone who may be in a wheelchair or have mobility issues to access the ADA compliant equipment. So, we're going to be working on designing that, as well as the parking spaces in the grass area adjacent to the field. We could put parking spaces in the parking lot, which I think was the original plan, and DPW was going to be painting, striping the parking lot, and putting in the ADA compliant signs, but as we're all aware, our DPW department is understaffed and has been very busy, and the town was remiss in getting those installed in a timely manner. But, the fact of the matter is that the new design that we met with the Disabilities Commission on is going to be much more friendly for people with accessibility issues. It'll be similar to the one where the fishing pier is. If you go over there, you'll see that there's a, a handicapped, the inaccessible, handicapped accessible, and that is all fully compliant. As a, as a matter of...
Where are you talking, Mark?
Excuse me?
The parking, where are you talking?
The fishing pier.
No, no.
Oh, it's going to, so...
If you're facing, if you're at the Civic Center...
Yes, so where the, where the playground is, if you're facing out towards Factory Street, it'll be to the right of that, cut into the grass area with a, a new, a new ramp being installed coming down to access those parking spaces. So, they won't, they will not be within the existing parking lot, they will be into the grassed area, which is, which would be more convenient for anyone.
So, it'll be no adjustment to the parking lot?
No adjustment to the existing parking lot, other than a speed bump going in. And that was something that was suggested, again, as a common sense measure, as we were discussing with the Disabilities Commission. One of our conversations was, well, you know, the high school uses that for students to park, and as we started to get into basically an open discussion with them, as well as DEAN was like, well, they probably, when they leave school, are accelerating through the parking lot. And if you've got children playing, it's like, hello, right?
That's a common sense for anybody that's up there, any families, anybody.
We've agreed to put in a speed bump in proximity to that, to, you know, slow, slow anyone who may be speeding through the parking lot down. I'm not saying anyone is, but the possibility. So, based on the report that was in the, that was on, on the news, we received, a couple of communities reached out to us, because they've had similar problems, and they have offered to let us use their certified inspectors and landscape architects. So, we'll be having assistance of other communities to design the layout, and we've agreed with the Governor's Commission on Disabilities to incrementally work with them, showing them the design as a progress, so that they're reviewing it as we go along, and we expect, you know, that to be completed and installed sometime in the spring, or heading towards the summer.
But again, some of these things that I listed will be, will be done.
Yeah, so, so the sign for the gate has been ordered. We had some staff go out and break out the wood chips over the last couple of days, so that, that should, especially where that, that merry-go-round is.
Do you have, do you have any idea what, I mean, I'm sure the winter, it doesn't have to be done as often, because there's not as many...
Well, you know, they, in, in our discussions with them, they said, you know, a couple of times a month, you know, our discussion with, with staff, and actually I spoke with Fred Gill today, is he's going to have that scheduled in at least once or twice a week during the, during the busy time of the summer.
That's what I was going to suggest, when it's spring, summer, is, because kids are going to be out there a lot in the winter, you don't need to be out there once a week because...
Right.
Well, I can tell you, and I know Mary Beth knows, before any of this report came out, I was appalled about the chips, only because I got to spend a lot of time up there over the last summer myself, and take handicap out of it. Kids were having trouble getting on the swings because everybody's dragging their feet, and they're making that two-foot hole. Now, a four, five-year-old normally can get up to the swing and pull him, pull him or herself up, herself up, could no longer do that, parents had to help them up. And I was, we were going through a lot of headache trying to get that raked, and whose responsibility, who's, by contract, who can do it, who can't do it? Well, you know, it's, it's been a headache with that, and it's now proven that we need to maintain that.
Yeah, it should be maintained, and, and, you know, when I went up there the other day, maybe Thursday or Friday, where the swings are, the gullies were very deep. And I, and I understand that, you know, kids swinging back and forth, keeping their feet, or, or pushing someone, as well as on that merry-go-round, you know, I'm sure children are on that, and the other kids are pushing them around, and they're wearing a path in there, yeah, and it really is a high, it's a high maintenance issue. And if we have staff, recreational staff or staff at the Civic Center, I would hope that they'd be able to go out, and I think it was a Civic Center staff person that ultimately went out and raked out those wood chips the other day.
And they're, and they're, I mean, they were happy, the, the governors, they were happy with our, what we were...
Oh, yeah, you know, it was, it was a very cordial meeting, it was an open discussion. We went back and forth, and, you know, they informed us that we're not the only community in the state that they're working with, they're working with Smithfield, they're working with Warwick, several other communities. I think it's a two or three-person staff in the office, they can have a lot of work to do, especially in, from them to us, especially because of the, the state reimbursement for school facilities. A lot of the schools that are being constructed or upgrades include playgrounds, and school departments are not aware that they need to be fully ADA compliant. So, they're actually working with Smithfield on two or three playgrounds right now, where they're trying to get them to bring those playgrounds into compliance, as well as Warwick, there's a school playground that they just installed there that was noncompliant. So, they've got a lot of work ahead of them, and they're, they're going to be starting to do outreach to communities, you know, school, school departments, town councils, they ask for contact for, for statewide planning associations, other things, so they can get the word out there. Apparently, it's not well-known that any state, federal, local funding, that any new that any new playground that's installed, moving forward, has to be fully ADA-compliant. Even if it's not advertised as an ADA-compliant playground, according to the regulations, it has to be compliant.
Well, I mean, at the end, it was... I mean, the story didn't make us look very well, but I think at the end, we come out of it making the playground more accessible to more children. So, that's a good thing. And there's some of these things that we went above and beyond that we probably would have never done. So, I think it's a good thing out of a bad situation.
Are they coming out to look at the Riverpoint?
Yeah, so we're going to have the other communities inspector go out and look at Riverpoint, and make sure that that's going to be compliant. And we have... I believe Ernie has already contacted the commission and made them aware of that facility, although we haven't really announced that that's open for... Well, yeah, it's still...
It's still covered in caution tape.
I think it's still got tape around it, yeah.
Riverpoint is complete with the mulch. I know Mark and I had some numerous conversations about the mulch.
Initially, yeah.
And I talked about a membrane surface going back and forth, but the cost expense to that... But now, I look at man-hours to rake and cost of membrane, it probably would have washed itself out. But, you know... You know, so, Riverpoint has not been open to the public yet. And hopefully, it'll be open to the public in the spring, once we confirm everything is there. There... Unfortunately, there is no... The playground that was there many, many, many years was taken down by Ray Beatty. The swing set was unsafe. The same parking area was there. They do not have any handicap-accessible parking there. On the soccer field, they do. So, it's a question of, do they got to put it closer to the playground? Because where that parking area is, where that playground is, is actually a dumpster area, so it's...
There is a flat gravel area there. And, you know, ADA parking doesn't have to be paved, but it has to be level, flat, and solid. So, you know, we're going to have some people looking at that. And there may be, you know, compacted gravel or something that could be put there. And then, it comes down to signage and access. That's a pretty level area over there and access to the facility. So, we'll be... We're going to be looking at it before it opens.
Mark, can you... As long as the inspector, a certified playground inspector's coming out, is there any way they could look at the two in Ward Four? Just...
I will... I will check with them.
Okay.
We're borrowing them from another community. I imagine they would. If you let me know which playground you're talking about, send me an email.
This has got nothing to do with the issue before you...
Yeah, we could talk offline.
All right.
Thank you, thank you.
Any questions for Mark from the council? Thank you, Mark.
Thank you for sticking around for us, Mark, too.
No problem.
Thanks, Mark.
Somebody have something from the public?
Are we allowed to speak now during public comment?
Public comment?
Upcoming appointments. Sewer Use Appeals Board, one alternate member with a term to expire 10/2021, two terms to expire 10/2020. Board of Tenement Affairs, one term to expire 2/2021. Public, one term to expire 11/2019. Public Recreation Committee, two full members. Pension Board Committee, one term to expire 11/18/2020, one term to expire 11/18/2021, and one term to expire 11/18/2022. Public Comment. Designated portion of the Town Council's Open Meeting for Citizens to address comments to the Town Council relating to matters affecting the public business. Comments will only be addressed to the Town Council. We will take them under advisement. When addressing the Town Council, please state your name and address. Please conduct yourself in an orderly and respectful fashion. The comments of citizens accessing this portion of our meeting are neither adopted nor endorsed by this body, but heard as requested. Members of the Town Council being duly elected public body, as identified in RIGL 424623, have no obligation to respond to public comments.
Mark, just state your name and address for the record?
Absolutely.
Good evening. Brian Moye, 132 Rollingwood Drive, North Kingston, Rhode Island. I came here tonight with a very thoughtful speech prepared to discuss the Factor Street playground issue. I wrote it. But as I was sitting in the back row, I'm shaking. I just find it appalling. And quite frankly, maybe everyone read a different memo than I did. And in all due honesty, this issue came to my attention way back when, when it was posted on Facebook that, you know, the town has got a grant, they want to build a playground. And for me, as a landscape architect, those of you who don't know, I am a landscape architect. I take interest in these projects throughout the state, because in some cases, I bid on them to build them, because I do landscape construction as well. So, I followed it. I let it be built. And then, I remember in a council meeting, I haven't been before the council in better part of a year, I saw there was an exchange between Councilman Messier and Town Planner, Mr. Carullo, about that it was compliant, it wasn't compliant. And as you all know, I have some dear friends in the town, the Reed family, Mr. Rhodes, Mr. Palazzo. And Alan Palazzo, who couldn't be here tonight, because he's not feeling all that well, he reached out to me and he said, "Brian, what do you think?" And I said, "I, you know, I used to do this part of landscape architecture quite extensively when I worked more in the public sector. But I'll be happy to give you my opinion, but it won't be an on-the-record opinion." I says, "You could be the face of this whole thing. It's just not something that I want my face out there. It's not what I do in my practice right now." So, I met Alan out there. We took the transit. We studied it. And if you had a copy of the memo that Alan sent to the governor's office, and then you pretty much look at the response memo that was sent to the town manager's office, pretty much out of the 10 items, nine out of 10 were spot-on. And the other item that he didn't comment, or she didn't comment on, was item number four. And I think it's just because the way I had discussed that with Alan about it has to be a 2% slope. So, that being said, after reading the governor's comment, and then also seeing an email exchange between Ernie and Mr. Cooper's office that was copied to Alan Palazzo, and he shared that with me, about what the four immediate priorities were versus what you're going to do in the spring, in my humble opinion, the town got off the hook pretty easily. And I can cite an example of a project I was involved in. It was in East Providence, Rhode Island. It's called the Rose Larissa Memorial Park. And at the time, I worked for a landscape architecture firm called Gates-Latin Associates. And I was kind of just an underling at that time. And my boss, we designed this beautiful park, and it was a grant similar to this one, and it had to be compliant. And I said to my boss at the time, "We need to provide equal access throughout the park." And because we went through value engineering bidding, one pathway was eliminated. And it ended up costing my boss, his errors in emission insurance, well in excess of $100,000, because we were off the slope percentage by 1%. And at the time, with the governor's office, and Mr. Cooper wasn't at the governor's office at that time, what happens typically in these situations is that a complaint is filed. They contact the municipality agency, whatever it may be. They issue a complaint, and then they typically want to sit down and try to have a good-faith negotiation. I will say this to you, that, like I said, I do think the town is being let off the hook very easily here. I think if the solicitor wanted to have a field day in litigation, all it takes is one person with a disability to file a complaint and try to bring that before the ACLU, because that was what was threatened on my boss, and you're talking a potential class-action lawsuit. And I don't want to be that person to bring this to the ACLU. But I will say that when I hear just some of the comments of common sense... Common sense for me right now would be tomorrow morning, the town manager or the town council telling whoever's in charge of that park to shut it down immediately until these actions are remedied. And in my opinion, I mean, there's some items that were just overlooked, like you're supposed to provide a pathway from a public street to the park. I mean, it was just brushed over here. And to discuss about having a gravel parking lot as parking spaces, that's fine and dandy.
Wasn't for that playground, it was for another one.
Okay, so I just want to make you sure that that is not entertained on this option, because you're dealing with erosion, you're dealing with line striping, you have to, you know, mark it for van-accessibility, so on and so forth. So, I like to now, if you don't mind, I know everyone's tired. You guys have had several meetings. I like to get back to what I planned on saying, because you just threw me for an absolute loop. So, I will cut the kind of happy, you know, hi, everyone, kind of part of my talk, and just say that the topic of ADA is one that is near and dear to my heart, as many in my life had or have disabilities, including one of my best friends, who suffers from Frederick's Ataxia, and is in a wheelchair, and has been since the age of 18. He's now 30. And unfortunately, as my wife and my children sit at home, my wife's twin brother, who died about nine years ago from a disease called Neiman Pick's, died being in a wheelchair. So, it's one of the reasons that I enjoy doing what I do as a landscape architect. It's why I got into the profession, because I like designing outdoor spaces that provide equal access. Why I don't do it right now, as many of you, many of you don't know, I have a very busy business, and I try to focus more of my design practice on residential spaces, because it's more passionate for me. But I do have several clients who have children with autism that I have to provide equal access to their own backyard, their own swimming pool. I also would like to just take a step back and say, what frustrates me more about this situation is that it seems to be the same old, same old. And back in 2017, I briefed this council about the irresponsible leadership in the town building official's office about a project down on 4143 Industrial Lane. As you will recall, the town manager issued a report on May 21, 2018, that reiterated many of the facts that were deficient in the building department yet. Once again, we have a project in this town that was improperly approved, based on sign-off from the building inspector on the footings for the playgrounds. There was no review by his office to make sure the playground was ADA-compliant. But more importantly, there was no permit filed, according to the file returned to us for the construction of the playground. I make these comments only on the public records request we did, and it was not in that file. And if it wasn't in the file, then that's a whole nother set of issues that the town has to deal with. In addition, as I pointed out back then, there were no plans submitted by a landscape architect, no plans reviewed by an engineer or other design professional, no review by the governor's office Commission on Disabilities. And I like to just point out that the day that WPRI did the interview, Alan asked me to be there, just because I'm the landscape architect. I'm supposed to know the lingo if it needs to be a specific question. And the governor's office, Mr. Cooper and his assistant, I don't remember her name, said that they would prefer municipalities to come before them, before projects are built, so that you're not doing a kind of post-after-the-fact remedy of this situation. And this goes back to exactly what I raised as a concern, that the town needs to do a better job in the planning process. To the lack of leadership, although I applaud the town planner and/or council for getting a grant to build the project, I criticize their lack of expertise in managing it. Here are a few things that jump out at me. Why wasn't there an RFP hired to... Advertised to hire a landscape architect or other design professional to design the project and prepare a proper set of bid documents that were compliant with the law? Even if the town didn't have the money, I have done pro bono work. There are good people in the community, whether in West Warwick, North Kingston, throughout the state, that are willing to do something, especially when you're dealing with children and people with disability. It's just something that could have been prevented, and you wouldn't be... Like, let's hire the landscape architect after, when you could have hired them in the beginning. Here's something that really irks my potato. Consider the town's dire financial status. Why did the town pay $10,000 more for this project? Now, you may look at me and say, "What the heck are you talking about?" But we obtained through the open records request, a copy of the bid sheet. And the selected bidder on the bid sheet, I believe that was prepared by the planner's office, or it could have been the financier, I'm not sure who it was, there's a line on it that says, "Bid equipment only as defined in the bid document." And there's a dollar amount, they wrote it, and then they handwritten it. That was $89,900. And then, the third item, which doesn't make sense to me, but it's just how it was written, it says, "Bid amount for installation of playground equipment and construction of playground." That was $45,700. So, basically, the town was asking for a price of product and a price for labor. And then, when you add those two numbers up, that comes to $135,600. Yet, when you look on the bidder's sheet, where he or she added it up, they put in $145,600. So, then I said, "All right, they overpaid 10 grand." Maybe there was a typo, maybe when it gets to the contract phase, what the council awarded. So, in that public records request, the contract was awarded for $145,600. So, the town, to my knowledge, paid $10,000 merely on a mathematical error. $10,000 may not be a lot to you, but $10,000 could go towards paying for some of the remedies of this project. It gets better. The town got three bids for the project. The second person, or second group, rather, was Emmy O'Brien. And Emmy O'Brien, if you don't know it, they're one of the... They're like the guru for playground equipment, pretty much in the Northeast. So, she, her office, Megan, who I know very well, she bid that the cost would be $82,240. That's a difference of 7660. So, I say, as, you know, Brian, who's trying to be fiscally responsive, why would the town pay $17,660 when you structured your bid agreement to ask for materials and then ask for labor? And I understand why the first guy, he was at $89,900 versus $82,240. He's handling the money, he's handling the equipment. He should mark that price up. But the town could have broken the bid up. It said it right in the bid sheet. So, it just doesn't make sense to me of why this was done at all. I still don't understand how, you know, in government and in my business, when we're working on big contracts like this, I bid it. I have my Esther made a look at it. I have my dad look at it, who's my partner. There's three, four, six of eyes when you're dealing with projects like this. How did the solicitor's office... I mean, his job is to review contracts. Why didn't he catch that? I'm not pointing fingers at the manager, but the manager's the top guy in the executive branch in this town. Why didn't the manager contract? Why didn't the town planner contract? The director of purchasing, finance? It just doesn't make sense to me. I just think that all parties should have reviewed this, and it should be every contract that comes out of this town hall, and every town hall in the state of Rhode Island. And I go back to, why hasn't it been shut down? It's not compliant. It's a serious, serious issue. It may not be serious to all of us, because we... Most of us don't have a disability. But if you had one, I mean, I watched Mr. Cooper trying to go through the gate. You can't go through the gate. And then, once we allowed him through the gate, pushing his wheelchair through the mulch, near impossible. Near impossible. And this is a man that, I'm not going to judge his age, he's probably maybe in his upper 50s, maybe 60s. Imagine yourself as being a six-year-old young boy or young girl, not having the upper body strength, as someone that is a mature adult. Now, what would I like to see come out of this whole situation? I think the town, which they've already acknowledged that they're going to do, hire a landscape architect. I am more than happy to provide some referrals to you. Like I said, I do not do this type of work. There are a lot of good LAs that are all friends of mine. And I think you would be better hiring someone to examine that whole situation. I kind of differ and think that it's not just going to be like a $5,000 fix. I mean, to say we're just going to weave rubber membrane paths there? Well, we need to take into consideration slopes, we need to take into consideration fall zones, so when someone's on a swing, you don't want someone on a wheelchair getting knocked in the head by someone on the swing. It's just too premature to say, "Oh, it's no big of a deal." The town also needs to plan better on all future projects. Consult with members of the community, like myself. If you don't like me, I don't care if you don't like me, but I'm happy to help. I wouldn't be here tonight so patsy and shaking if I didn't care to help this community. I would strongly recommend that as you plan for your next year's budget, and I know that that process started tonight with the schools committee, that the town hire a consultant to look at all public buildings, spaces, or parks throughout the town to make recommendations on ADA compliance. And I'll point out to item number one, that I wrote through Alan, and then it was acknowledged by Mr. Cooper. According to Title II of the American Disabilities Act, all state and federal government facilities must follow the requirements of the ADA 2010 standards effective March 15, 2012. We are now in 2019. How that information is not known in either the building department, the planning department, whatever department, it's just mind-boggling to me. I would also suggest that you, as a part of your budgetary process, put a line in on for capital investment to pay for some of the recommendations that this consultant can have. I can tell you that there, just in this very building, when I walked in, there are things that are not compliant. And the last thing I want to see is someone get rich on suing the town, when it doesn't need to happen. It's just proper planning. I'm... As I've said before, I'm strongly recommending the playground be shut down immediately, since it doesn't provide equal access. Technically, the equipment that's there, there should be 50% of the devices, 50%. And he said this off the record, it didn't get put on the TV, but technically, 50% of those devices up there, the equipment, should be handicap-accessible. So, it takes one person to come up there and say, "I can't go over there. There's 10 of these, and there's only two." And then, you're not compliant. I just think it should happen. I would recommend disciplinary action at someone in this building, planner, manager, whoever. The town council hires the manager, the planner, the building official, the DPW. They work for you. They work for the taxpayers. If they're not doing their job, if they don't know the law, and it's now costing you 50, 20, 30, $60,000, do something about it. You sit in the driver's seat there. Lastly, and of course, he left, Councilman Messier always seems to be in the public spotlight with his Facebook theatrics. I personally think that it's shameful that he still is not there, that you, as a council, can, by law, by charter, take out a no-confidence vote in him. And in my opinion, kick him off the council. Because that's what I think of someone who, it was great when it was like in the planning process, but now that there's a problem, let me make my... but now that there's a problem, let me make my forthcoming spiel, Mr. Positivity, and then let me get out of here. And I understand, he has children, I have children. I'm not with my children right now. I'm here before you. It's disgusting to me. And that's all I have on this topic. I would like to do, say, one more thing, and this has been something that has really irked my potato. You know, I was looking back, because I, believe it or not, I do watch all these meetings, as crazy as that sound, that my wife thinks I'm wacky. And about a year ago, almost to this day, I forget if it was last Tuesday or this coming Tuesday, a very close friend of mine, who happens to be sitting in the back row, Tom Oates, was trying to be put on the juvenile board. And although Tom did not get put on the board, he... There's just something about it when we go off a coffee that just never struck it right with him. And I always said, "Tom, I got your back, I'll come up to bat for you anytime." And he's like, "Brian, I don't want you to do it." And I figured, "Tonight's the night I'm going to do it." So, what happened at that meeting is Tom didn't get on the board, because some, I'm going to use the bio, I'm not going to single out anyone, said that they had embarrassing information on Tom. Now, when I think about that, what does the term embarrassing suggest when you're appointing someone to the juvenile hearing board? To me, and I've asked many friends and family members and others, they think that Tom has some sleazy or wacky thing in his record that would prevent him from sitting on that board. And like I said, I've been bothered by this. Tom says, "Brian, shut up." So Tom says, "Shut up," Brian says, "Shut up." But then, I get... Excuse me, one second. I get this texted to me, that this... And I don't know, I try to stay off these West Warwick pages, that this... I'll call her a whack job. This whack job, who's been tormenting the town, points out that the reason that Tom didn't get on the board is because the council, someone on the council said that he had embarrassing things in his history. So what happened from that is that Tom gets a call from his supervisor. He works at CASA, and he volunteers 100% of his time for children in the court system. And they decide, she then decides to file a complaint there, and uses this meeting, this embarrassing language, as the reason why the complaint was filed. And of course, they do a check on Tom, and it's 100% clean, nothing. Because he's a good guy. He just wants to help everybody out. He may have his beefs with people up here, but at heart, there is no more loving person than Tom Oates, for children, for his community, and for what he does. And I just think it's embarrassing. You want to talk about what's embarrassing? That this council has not come out and corrected the record for Tom. He's too good of a person. The apology should be issued publicly on behalf of the council, not on behalf of the person that made that comment. I apologize for being a little jittery up here. I wish nothing for the best for all you. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Hearing none?
No.
Motion to adjourn.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tom Oates, Sixth Colonial Way. I've been trying to address an issue in Ward Three. I started addressing it last June, beginning of June, and it was told to me that this issue is runoff from the sprinklers from the golf course. Here we are, dead of winter. I understand we have to bring backhoe out to scrape the ice off the road in Ward Three. Just wondering what the update on that is. And maybe we could have that on the agenda, because I know there's a lot of people really passionate about knowing what's going on, when is it going to get fixed?
Are we talking about New London Avenue?
Yes, we are.
As far as, and Ernie, if you want to give an update. I know they were there, they had the road shut down, and they were doing some work to do a bit of discovery. So if you want to give an update on it?
Thank you.
Again, to the best of our understanding, the issue may be excessive groundwater, which is seeping up. And interestingly, that is a common problem in many communities this year for some reason. At this point, one of the conversations I've had with the Director of Public Works is to take a fresh look at that situation. You know, he is a civil engineer, as well as Director of Public Works, to see what he thinks. I spoke to him about this, and he indicated that in prior positions, he had situations that occur like this, where for some reason, there's groundwater coming up. Now, the fix could be many things, but it revolves around some type of construction areas, you know, to determine where the possible water is coming from. So it ruled out all the obvious sources, so this looks like a engineering project, which has to be done. At the present time, the solution would be, which is not a great solution, but put sand there, salt there, as warranted, trying to keep it down. And during this interim, look at what types of possible engineering fixes there are. You know, I'm not an engineer, but, you know, I have certain ideas. But again, you know, someone with that type of background has to look at it. We've consulted, you know, our consulting engineer, who's familiar with the area, and he's indicated that, in his opinion, it's groundwater. That once the water table goes down, it will recede and not be a problem, but it's still occurring, so again, it's something that has to be looked at from the lens of an engineering problem, and see what that fix could be. And I think it's something that, you know, could be complicated, finding out where the water is, and determining responsibility for the water, if that's an issue, but to fix it. But at the present time, sanding and salting is the only thing that can be done at the present time.
So do we have somebody looking at this every day? Because this could be, this is a daily thing.
Pretty much.
That's true, to your question, yes, between, you know, Public Works reviewing it, and then the police department. I mean, they are, you know, out there 24/7, and if they feel there's a situation that warrants it, they will call Public Works, and then they will salt it or sand it, depending upon what needs to be done.
Is the director's making the call to do, when the salt and sanding is to go on?
Well, I think that that's, well, that particular issue is going to be, if the Public Works is out there and they see it, they will do that. If it's after hours, and police and their patrols see it, they will call Public Works foreman, and then he will send a crew out to, you know, do the sanding or salting.
Could we have someone be on a schedule? Maybe the foreman of DPW? Yeah, preventative measures to check it, like 7:30 every morning. Just command that your number one responsibility is to check that. Because I'm getting a lot of calls on that, people coming from my ward over through Ward Three, you know, and especially kids going to school. I mean, it's just going to be, it's a nightmare.
Right. Yes, we could, something like that could be worked out. I mean, no, you probably drive it when I come into work. I drive it every day, just because it's very strange that it's still occurring. But I will tell you that I was driving, and I saw the same thing in Stonington, Connecticut, where down a hill, it's coming down. So it's strange. And during the discussion with Director Olet, he indicated that in his position westward, there are like five areas like that that never had problems, that keep on bubbling up, and the fixes, you know, had been, the water table goes down. Now, this is still, it's still occurring, still raining, but those interim measures will have to be done to make sure that that is salted and sanded. And again, we're fortunate that, you know, we have a good consulting engineer who has spoken with our new town, Director of Public Works has spoken to consulting engineer about the issue. They talked about it, so again, when you put good people together, they can try to solve some solutions to it. But in the present, that's all we can do.
So they are working together now to come up with a solution?
Well, they have, I know they have spoken about this issue. So I'm assuming that conversation's going to lead into more, and some type of a plan. And again, if we're going to be going into, you know, our budget season, if we have to, you know, if we need to budget funds for that, we will. If it's something that needs to be done, when it can be done, then, you know, we would have funds for that through our capital. So it will be taken care of. It's a very unusual situation, because all the obvious sources have been ruled out. Golf course ruled out, water department ruled out, sewer department ruled out. So everything has been ruled out, so it has to be coming in from, again, the Warwick side, through some type of a... Spring coming from that drainage area, or the crevices and ledge, and it's, water goes to where it goes, and then it boils up, so... It's that, you know, so once, you know, a plan in, you know, the excavation could be done, what's necessary, a plan will be developed, and then, you know, we will do what is necessary, the plan calls to correct the situation. Now, again, I'm not versed on this, but again, if water is coming on property, a road from private property, I don't know about that issue, if there is some responsibility from the property owner that the water is discharged on. Again, that's another issue that just has to be questioned, asked, and answered, whatever that is. But to answer your question, you know, that's what we're doing at the present time, because there's really no other recourse that can be done.
So we will try to step up the preventative part of it to make sure that instead of having to call somebody in the middle of the night to put sand?
Well, I will, yeah, I will address that tomorrow morning. So during the normal hours, you know, they can check it and have crews, because they have vehicles that are already available with salt and sand at the end of the day. So they can do that while during the day, but then if something happens, again, overnight, then the reliance is generally upon the police department, or if somebody calls.
Right.
But that's what we're doing at the present time.
Thanks.
And just to follow up, the water's been coming out of that ground since April, that it's been noticed. And it was brought up in the early June, and Kent County Water ruled out, Sewer Department ruled out, then it was blamed, it was the golf course, runoff from the golf course, which I made comment that it couldn't be running off from the golf course, because it was perking up through the pavement in three places, right through the pavement, not coming down under the stone wall, but perking through the pavement in three separate places. And I was brushed off, again, don't know what I was talking about. Nine months later, we're Monday morning quarterbacking this. It's a shame that it had to take to the dead of winter, when we got a three-inch-thick pile of ice needing a backhoe to scrape it off the road. This should have been taken careful, at least looked into. We know it's not Kent County Water, we know it's not this. It's coming from somewhere, it needs to be dealt with, because it's a safety issue.
I don't think anybody brushed you off. When you brought it up here before the council, I know for a fact that I was on site. Kent County Water was on site. We all went out there.
I know you did.
They brought in their seismograph with their headphones, and started walking around, listening for water, and doing whatever. The sewer department planted so much dye in their pumping system that it turned the sewer department green down there.
Correct.
There was no dye coming out. The smell of it, we, one of the Kent County Water guys was smelling the water, the rust. We were there.
I know that, and I know you were there.
Members of the board, members of the board of the golf course have reached out to us and said, "If you discover something from us, let us know. We'll be more than happy to help." They're the board members. Every, it's just a matter of find out. Nobody brushed you off that night, I just want to let you know that.
Yeah, well, yes, I was.
It took time, it took time.
Yeah, because I have a lot of notes on it, but I understand it takes a lot of time. But again, that was back in June, I think is the night we had the discussion, though it had been mentioned the month before. But again, here we are, and it's really something, it could be a big project. I don't know, I'm not a geologist. And it's obvious that there's, you know, crevices through the rock, because that's ledge mount, and it's all ledge, and the water could be coming from anywhere through the ground. But even in the dry, we had some real long dry periods through September and October, with no rain, and the water was still perking out of the ground, running wet.
Then there was weeks at a time it stopped.
Right. I wouldn't know about weeks, but there were days that the road was dry, for three, four, or five days in a row.
Former chief Barris would call me up and say, "Dave, it's not..." Because he is a board member at that Valley Country Club, and he told me, "It's not percolating, it's not percolating." It was strange, and all of a sudden, out of nowhere, six, seven days later, here it comes.
It was one day where it was perking up about two inches, just like a waterfall, coming right out of the pavement. So I thank you guys for, you know, having somebody keep an eye on that, because we don't need a tragedy in this town, someone wipes out. Thank you.
We agree, thank you. Any other public comment? Yeah, go ahead, if you want to go first. If you want to just come up and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Charlotte Ringwood. Do I get my business address, which is why I'm here, or my?
Business address, that's fine.
1454 Main Street, Unit 18, West Warwick, Rhode Island. So I was asked to be here by the town clerk at 7:00 PM for approval of a business license?
All those have been approved.
Oh.
So you've been sitting here for your license?
Yes.
Which license was it?
It's Heart and Soul Healing Art Studio.
Yes, that's been approved.
Oh, okay.
Thank you for enjoying us tonight. Come back any time.
Derek, 62 Andrews Ave.
Derek who?
You know, Reed.
Thank you, just needs full name for the record.
A couple things. I'm not here to start any wars, I'm pretty tired, actually. When I send out an email to the council, or to my councilman, "Listen, I don't like Jay Messier, he don't like me, whatever." But when it's a concern, he's a council member for the ward that I live in. I shouldn't have to reach out to anybody else. When I send an email, and I don't get a response of, "Yes, I got it. I'll do what I can, I'll see what I can do," something, I get nothing. When I see him in public, I say something to him, I still get nothing. I sent them an email requesting a discussion about the playground, which we got. I know it didn't come from my request, I'm sure there was others. But I also put on there that I want a discussion and action on a security camera outside the front door of this building. Now, I found out in an unfortunate situation that there wasn't one out there. That's fine. But when you look in the camera that's out here, it reflects off the door. You can't see that outside that door. When you look at the police camera, it stops at the railing. The front of this building is wide open for anything, anything. Somebody can come in, do what they got to do, get out of here. Nobody's going to know. You're not going to get a plate, you're not going to get a face, you're not going to get nothing. This day and age, that security is a big thing, okay? I just wanted it on the agenda for you people to discuss affording a camera for the front of the building, and I can't even get that. Now, that was a concern. That wasn't me, Badger, and Messier, whatever. That was a concern, but I don't care about my safety, but for everybody else, coming in, going out, walking down the street, whatever, right in front of those stairs. And in my opinion, when a constituent asks that question, whether you love me, you hate me, I don't really care. You should say, "You know what? This is a security factor, this is a safety factor, maybe I should respond. Maybe I should put it on the agenda." That's all I'm saying. And I would ask them directly, but his new thing is, "Let's get out of here before public comment, because maybe they can't handle it, I don't know." Okay? That's his own problem. My problem is, like I said, I had an unfortunate situation out there. No camera out there. My word against everybody else's, that's fine. But if somebody knows that there's no security in front of this building, with the way the world is right now, can't say I didn't tell you.
Thank you.
I'll put it on the agenda for the next one.
I appreciate it.
I'll send you an email as far as what your points may be, and I'd like to talk with maybe the chief, and see what we can... Just for, this is just for discussion, I'm not saying I'm more against it.
I will tell you...
But this is just for discussion purposes for the next agenda.
We'll put it on the next agenda, I have no problem with that. I could tell you, I think, in when a design packet was made for this actual security system, there was one on the front of the building, but there's an issue with the thickness of the building, and getting the wire from there to where it belongs was another issue. There was a gentleman who was squeezed in between... There was a gentleman who squeezed in between the second floor and the first floor through this little hatch here, and he could not get past, there's something there that he could not get past. But tonight, as I was walking in, I did take a glimpse, I noticed that there's a bunch of caps on the ceiling, because that is my expertise, and there's a bunch of caps on the ceiling, we would have to remove those caps, and see if that's a direct shot.
That'll be for the next discussion, for the next agenda.
So, we can put that on the next agenda.
And I don't know where you're talking, as far as what reaches and what doesn't.
I'm just saying, in front of the building.
I'm new to this.
And I'll tell you this, if it has anything to do with a contract reason, or an expense reason, there's two cameras in this room, one could go towards the outside, and remove one.
Because that one, that one right here, one of those two doors are closed, it's a reflection. It stops right there, you can't see outside.
It all depends on the day, yes.
I'll get back to your email, because I'm not quite sure what exactly you're talking about.
And if you have room on your server, I will supply you with any camera you want to have, a garage full, indoor, outdoor, infrared, high-end back cameras, I'll supply.
Any other public comment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Hearing none, have a merry Christmas, happy holidays, and Happy New Year.
Thank you.